I'm ready if you're ready.
I'm going to call to order the meeting for my six, roll call.
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Long. Supervisor Foye. And Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
And we have Bonnie Weigle is going to help us today from Food Share. Bonnie, can you come up to the podium? And share some words with us today on your program? And today is International Women's Day. And go ahead and share something with us.
Absolutely. So, good morning. Good to see you, friends. It always is, for us, inspiring when we come and visit you, which I think will continue today. So, since 1975, United Nations declared International Women's Day. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that holiday. Show of hands, anybody? Right on. So, okay, I was born in 68, so this got started a little after I was born. But I love the theme. And really what it is, is to celebrate equality, peace, and really recognizing the relationship that women have each and every day in developing the world. And so, I just want to share a couple of moments with you. And International Women's Day, I think, is really, really relevant. In Ventura County, our school district, I was at a chamber meeting here for Ventura, over 41 languages are spoken just here in the Ventura Unified School District. So, when you think about what an international place the county of Ventura is, 41 different languages. In 2004, I had the privilege of attending the International Rotary Peace Conference. And there, there were 48 countries, all discussing one subject. And that was, how do we take better care of each other? How do we end poverty? And how do we continue to always be thinking about our children and what our future delivers? And that's when International Women's Day, so it's not just for women. And I thought this was really interesting. Every day for the last couple of years, there is somewhere in the world, some conversation about our poverty alleviation that happens with our children, every single day. Shouldn't be surprised, but I think it's pretty remarkable. Here in Ventura County, it happens a lot more than you might think as well. Saturday is actually the official date, on the 8th. And all over the world, from Paris to Morocco, to Afghanistan, to here in Ventura County, there is a moment where women assemble on different bridges all over the world to just remember and think through what we can do to create a better world. And I wanted to share a couple of quotes from some children, from some teachers that asked, "Well, why do you think that this is an important day?" And so many times, our kids get it better than we do. So, my youngest just turned 14 this morning, made her breakfast, and we were chatting about this, tried to get her to come along. She wouldn't, but I said, "Okay, give me something. Tell me why this would be important to you." And she looked at me, and she said it very, very simply for me. She said, "Mom, women get it. It doesn't matter what language they speak, we just get it." And then she kept doing her hair, and I thought, "Okay, there you go." But men do as well. And together, we are doing so much. The theme, and I don't know Supervisor Zaragoza, I bet you knew this, the theme this year, every year is their theme, it's poverty alleviation and the end of hunger.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So, somebody did their homework. I was impressed when I saw the theme. Andrew, who's all of age 10, said, "I think it's important to celebrate International Women's Day because it expresses the equality of everyone in the world, man or woman. It reminds us of the woman who devoted their lives to give other women freedom to vote and just make the world a better place." Celine, also 10, says, "I think it's important because it gives us a chance to remember all of the women who gave up their lives to give women a chance for equal rights. Women are no better or worse than men, so it is fair that we all get treated equally. It is also a chance to think about the women in our families, who I'm sure sometimes we take for granted. It is an important day for men, too, to think about how they treat women and how women all over the world are still facing injustice." And then there was one more here that I appreciated as well, and this is from Natasha, also 10. And she says, "It's important because women are the ones who give birth to us, each and every one of us. They gave us, they gave up nine months for us, and we should always appreciate that. Without our mothers and grandmothers, we wouldn't be here." So, simple thought process, but it's in that moment of being present, I think. So many times, we're so busy in our day-to-day, and we do forget to think about the important things. And so, today, if we could just, you could stop yourselves a couple times throughout the day, and if you're a woman, give yourself a hug, give your girlfriend a hug, call your mom, call your girlfriend. And of course, if you're a man, reach out to that woman who means, or women that mean so much to you, just give their hand a little extra squeeze, because we have done a lot, yet there is more to do. But together, we're figuring it out, and it gets a little better every day. And here in Ventura County, you all really drive that strategic vision, that it's not okay for our neighbors and our friends to live through poverty, to have injustice, to not care about our environment. And I think collectively, you've brought that impact in a way that we can see the fruits of our labor, and we are getting better at it. So, with that, I just would like to say, "Thank you for letting us celebrate International Women's Day." And I think you'll see on Saturday, a couple of different celebrations. If you'd like to know more, I will post them on our Facebook, on where you can find more on Food Share's Facebook site, and what's happening around the world. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you so much. Let's give her a good hand. Mike, can you help us with the pledge?
Ready? Congratulations to the flag, to the United States, to the Republic of America, to the nation, to the republic, and to the people of this world.
Okay, the minutes, number six. Got a motion?
I'll go ahead and move approval of the minutes. If I could, just comment on how much I appreciate our moment of inspiration this morning, at a time when women are being assailed, just for speaking out in Congress on their rights for pre-choice, and it's just, it's shocking. So, women do need to stand up strong at this time, and appreciate this.
Thank you. Okay. And then review the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Zaragoza. We have no changes.
Good. Number seven. Okay, seven. Okay. Motion for 10 to 18. Next item is public comments. Mr. Bennett, I think, I'll keep voting. Did I vote? The public comments, we're going to have three minutes. And the first one is Kirk Cushion.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for listening to me this morning. My name is Kirk Cushion. I'm a homeowner and past president of Seabridge Homeowners Association in Channel Islands Harbor. I'm also a chief officer with the California County Fire Department, and a former harbor patrol officer with five years' experience within the county of Ventura. I first want to state that I fully support the mission of the Channel Islands Harbor Patrol, and have dedicated my life to public service and the safety sector. In these times of economic turmoil and reduced levels of funding for public safety, it is essential that we constantly reevaluate the means to provide the maximum level of service in the most cost-efficient manner. There are some issues related to the special tax lien for community facilities District Number Four in Seabridge. Over 60% of the special tax assessment, which is non-deductible off of income taxes, is attributed to the Channel Islands Harbor Patrol costs. Channel Islands Harbor has a total of 2,888 slips. The Seabridge homeowners who pay this special tax have 7.8% of the slips in the Marina, yet we are paying for four harbor patrol officers out of the total of 14, which is 28.5% of the staffing. That seems very unjust. In addition, specifically out of our CFD, we're paying for the North Harbor Patrol Station, two docks, two harbor patrol boats, a trailer, a motor vehicle, and their maintenance, and a five-year replacement schedule paid directly from this CFD. Marina Del Rey, the largest man-made small boat harbor in the world, has 6,500 slips. They have 15 full-time harbor patrol officers, who happen to be sworn Los Angeles County Sheriff's deputies. They have ancillary duties in addition to the harbor patrol, a first responder for fire rescue and law enforcement for the entire Santa Monica Bay, Point Dume to Palos Verdes. Additional responses for all of the aircraft rescue off the waters of Los Angeles International Airport mandated by the FAA. My recommendations: evaluate alternative funding sources for the Channel Islands Harbor Patrol. There are Homeland Security Grants, Public Safety Grants, use fees, state DBA funding, U.S. Coast Guard Partnership Funding, or possible consolidation with the Ventura County Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, or Oxnard Police Department. Or increase the general fund contribution. There are other budget-saving options: reduce off-season staffing levels, October through May, reduce nighttime staffing, reduce the vessel inventory, eliminate the vehicle replacement, or close the satellite office at Seabridge. There is an MOU between the county of Ventura, city of Oxnard, and Mandalay General Partnership from September of 2002 that's over 10 years old and requires updating. It needs to be reexamined to update and establish a fair and equitable method of cost apportionment for the harbor patrol. The current MOU provides for four full-time positions, three harbor patrol officers top pay, one sergeant, the north station, and, as I stated before, the vehicles and boats.
Thank you, Kurt.
I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors take action on this issue, investigate, and respond with their recommendations. Thank you.
Martin Glad, please, followed by Patty Regling. Martin first, and then Patty.
Oh, I thought you said...
Followed by...
Ladies first.
No, no.
You go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, and Madam Supervisor Parks. My name is Martin Glad. I'm also a resident of Seabridge in Oxnard, and I echo everything that my associate has enumerated to you folks. I would like to bring to your attention the documents that I furnish, page 1 of 1, which outlines my concerns for our community facility districts 3 and 4. Because I only have an hour presently, I will only talk about CF4, which is the community facility district that funds the Channel Island Harbor Patrol. For the current fiscal year, ending June 30, 2012, the costs allocated to our Seabridge community has gone up $100,000. $100,000, Supervisors. Even though the budget this year compared to last year has gone down $200,000, we are taxed an additional $100,000 without any valid explanation of this increase. The funding for the Channel Island has gone up over $1 million. That's over $1 million from the 2009-2010 budget. This is outrageous. I submit that a full audit should be done of the Channel Island Harbor Organization. Currently, Ms. Cohen, your auditor controller, is evaluating the MOU that was made reference to earlier, to determine the validity and the merits of that MOU, which has been stated that is far outdated and should be updated to current levels. I wish to have a future meeting with you, Supervisor Zaragoza, to go over the three pages that I have submitted, including the budget for fiscal 2012, which is ending. The sort of passe you and I have met before, and I don't feel we've accomplished anything, sir.
It's the city of Oxnard issue, too, you know, so...
And I've tried to bring these points to the city without any positive action.
I'd be happy to meet with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Patty?
In conclusion...
Okay, I'm sorry.
In conclusion, I feel that we're getting some cooperation from the auditor's office. The audit is not completed. Hopefully, it will be completed by the end of the month, and I'm certain there will be revelations that we can discuss. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. You can call my office, too.
Thank you.
Patty, followed by Bruce Garber. Good morning.
We're presenting some information about smart meters this morning, and a lot of us are very concerned, so we're down here to talk with you. We're mostly on the, in the outline of the county areas in Ojai, so we really are depending on you to help us out here. So... How do you... It's supposed to work? I'm supposed to hit a button and...
Can you...
Okay. All right. So, we have concerns over these wireless meters that are being installed as we speak. There are biological effects that are documented. This is a violation of Americans' right to privacy, and customers are being forced to accept wireless meters against their will. We already are exposed in so many ways to too many EMFs as it is, and what's really strange is that there are frequent incidences of fires and blown-out appliances documented after installation of the smart meters. I don't know if you're aware of this. The rate hikes are being, really are worrying people in many areas where they've already As you can see, the difference between smart meter radiation and cell phones and Wi-Fi is astronomical. So, what we're looking at is possible, well, actually, it just, it says, "The World Health Organization classifies radio frequency and electromagnetic fields, as from smart meters, as a Class II carcinogen." People are actually experiencing these symptoms: disruption of concentration, behavioral disorders, heart rhythm irregularities, headaches, migraines, insomnia, chronic exhaustion, tinnitus, nervousness, joint pain, and inflammation of tissues. I'm going to skip these. So, there was a lawsuit filed against the San Diego Gas and Electric, because the plan fails to require a health risk assessment as part of any environmental review. And already, many California jurisdictions have already contacted the CPUC. They're very concerned. And smart meters are already banned in these counties and areas. So, we're looking to Ventura County to be one of those areas that will ban the smart meters. And this is the number to get on the delay list. Many of us have already done that, and if you haven't...
Patty, is Bruce going to take over for you, or...
Oh, we're done. This is, well, what I'm, I'm done with mine.
Okay, thank you.
Is that three minutes?
Well, let me, let me just make a comment. I'm glad you brought this.
Pardon?
I said, "I'm just very glad you brought this up." This smart meter thing, besides your rights being taken away in the future, what they're going to do to control your power and everything else, besides trying to say for environmentally, we're doing all this stuff, and giving the radio waves, everything else, this is, I'm glad you're fighting this. This is, this is the wrong thing, taking your rights. And if you look at what's going to happen, is you start to use your power based on what you want to do and you're willing to pay for power, they're going to say, "No, I'm not going to let you do your power, what you want to do. This is your rights being taken away." Thank you so much for bringing this.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Patty, okay. Supervisor?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just a few things. One, thank you for coming down and bringing this PowerPoint. I know trying to squeeze it down to five minutes was, was not easy for you, to be able to do that. This is, this is an important issue in all of Ventura County, quite frankly, in the state and the country. I think for a wide variety of reasons, people have issues. Supervisor Foye is more from them, you know, controlling your usage, and I know you've got lots of health effects that people in the Ojai Valley are concerned about. It's a, it's a difficult issue from a local government standpoint. I do want to point out that I have written to the California Public Utilities Commission, and it's very brief, I just want to read, "Request for opt-out provision for Southern California Edison Smart Meters. Dear Commissioners, as a Ventura County Supervisor, I have heard many constituents who do not want a smart meter on their home for a variety of reasons. Because an opt-out provision has been established for PG&E, Pacific Gas and Electric, right, it's only fair and appropriate that a similar opt-out provision be made available to Southern California Edison customers as well." So, thank you. So, we, we have written them and asked them, you know, just on the issue of fairness, to do that. You made references to places that have banned them. We have done our research on that. They just went ahead and still installed the smart meters, because the local bans are preempted by state law. In fact, we're, we're not allowed to, and state law says, we, you know, we can't do those bans, they don't, and they're meaningless. So, I'm not sure that us going through and banning, and we'll have county council giving us, you know, "Hey, you're preempted by state law," not sure that's, that has any impact. But I think, you know, this, you know, us trying to get the word out, making sure that everybody that wants to opt out does, you know, to the extent that they delay a place like the Ojai Valley, because there are a lot of people that are trying to opt out and delay, that, that could be one of the, one of the more successful things that you might, may be able to do for all of the people that are concerned. And for everybody who showed up with Patty today, I appreciate you being here and getting, you know, down to the Government Center this morning. So, I just want to let you know, we're on it, we're looking, we're working at it. I wish that we didn't have that preemption issue, but the banning doesn't, doesn't have any impact, and has not...
It would still be important, I think, for you to take a stand, though. It would help.
Sure, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I, yeah, and I think I am...
We have put a few speakers in that are going to also speak about this. Next one is Bruce Garber, and followed by LS Leiderman.
Yes, my name is Bruce Garber, and I, I live in the Upper Ojai, which is, you know, an unincorporated area. And our city council has heard from people who live in the city, but as you know, there's a lot of Ojai that isn't incorporated. And I'm, Patty gave you all of the hard evidence, you know, that we, that we have, I'm not going to get into that. I just wanted to urge you to do whatever it is that you think you can do, and if these other towns and cities are being refused to, you know, to not have them in there, then there have to be lawsuits, I would assume, something of that sort. And there are many reported health problems, as you've seen. The electromagnetic fields are classified as a Class IIb carcinogen, which can cause cancer. And no one that I would know would want to have that on their home. And I was involved in the 90s with trying to get the big radar tower out of the Upper Ojai, which they put in there under false pretenses. The Board of Supervisors did request them to take it out. We worked for a long time and raised piles of money, and, and had Barbara Boxer helping us, and the National Academy of Sciences said that it wasn't effective. Anyway, the head of the UCLA Geology Department said that it wasn't effective. We couldn't even sue them on the basis of health, possible health effects, but we know that from many, many authoritative studies, that people who were being exposed, especially up on Suffer Mountain Road, were getting a lot of electromagnetic radiation. And so, I hope that so many more of us who just do not want this in their homes, you saw that, that charge, and how, how intense it was. I can't imagine anyone here who would have, could have that installed in their, on their home. My, my box is right next to my bedroom window, and, and be able to sleep at night. So, I just urge you to take all the information that will be given to you by, that you'll get, and I hope you can act on it on our, on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have got a few speakers that, okay, LS.
Yes, hi, LS Leiderman. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed installation of smart meters in Ventura County, and specifically in Ojai Valley, and that county area, which many of us who are here today live in, outside the immediate city of Ojai. There are many dangers, and I'll just go through some of them. You may have received the materials already on, on this, so I'll try to make it brief. I'm concerned about the health hazards. The World Health Organization and the International Agency for Research on Cancer ruled that the electromagnetic fields from non-ionizing radiation devices are Class IIb carcinogen, which means they cause cancer in humans, and they're as carcinogenic as lead, DDT, HIV, and chloroform. The following health effects have been documented in studies on EMF: DNA breaks, cancer, endocrine disruption, birth defects, sterility, heart arrhythmia, learning impairment, ADD, ADHD, headache, fatigue, and sleep disturbance. Children, pregnant women, seniors, and people with immune deficiencies, and people with medical implants are especially at risk. And Patty already mentioned all this sleep problems, headaches, ringing in the ears, dizziness, nausea, memory loss, insomnia, heart problems, sleeping problems, and physical ailments. And because, oh, yes, I'm really, really concerned, because we haven't heard any reason why we need these smart meters. I haven't heard one good reason, you know, that we need, why we need them. And there's many reasons why we don't. I was told by an employee of Edison that smart meters, in fact, will not work in, in the Ojai Valley because of the mountains. They installed them in Victorville, and they didn't work there because of the mountains. And the only way they will work in the Ojai Valley is if they raise the levels of electromagnetic, of radiation so high, you know, that they will be very, very, very unsafe, and, and, you know, exponentially increasing the health hazards and dangers, and in fact, can kill us and our animals. Not to mention the bees that we need for orange orchards, like mine, and avocado trees and orchards. And anyway, they're also, they're going to put smart meter collection stations on certain houses in every neighborhood, not on every street, but in every neighborhood. I'm not sure how many houses will have these collection stations, but you won't have a choice of having that station on your house. And what that is, is equivalent of having a cell tower on your house, and that causes cancer, and that kills people.
Thank you so much. Thank you. James Joseph, followed by Tyler Nelson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. First of all, I want to thank you for your consideration of this very important issue, and the stand that I see you taking. It's time that we push back against this egregious corporate action. I'd like to look at the big picture a little bit. First of all, this is a little bit like deja vu. I was a member of the task force launched by Assemblyman Richard Godfrey of the State Assembly in New York in the mid-'90s. And we went over this subject very carefully because of cancer clusters that were showing up at that time, particularly around high power, high-tension power lines, et cetera. We looked at the studies from the Carolistic Institute in Stockholm, we looked at the Nancy Wertheimer studies in Denver, we looked at the New York Power Line Studies. And keep in mind, it was, the evidence was absolutely conclusive. Keep in mind, this was before the enormous proliferation of microwave towers and cell phones, et cetera, et cetera. All one has to do to see the gravity of this is to look at the enormous rise in childhood leukemia, cancers. Amazing to go into one of these cancer wards, as I have done, and see these children. There's, our future is at stake here. I mean, there's no question about that. So, then we ask, "Here's this, here's the science." And in the face of that, we have power companies pushing smart meters. Let's look at the big picture. We have President Obama standing up, saying, "I want to tell you about these smart meters," very much like a used car salesman. "They will save you energy," and he went on and on and on about this. So, what's the agenda here? Okay? The elimination of meter readers, number one, jobs. Okay? Attempts to gather more and more information. Incidentally, these are radio frequency transmitters. Okay? Gather more and more information on innocent citizens through smart meter technology. Gather more and more information on innocent citizens through smart meter technology. This is very much in alignment with the elimination of the Bill of Rights, our right to privacy, habeas corpus, all signed away, buried in the Orwellian Defense Authorization Bill signed by President Obama on New Year's Eve. Okay? So, go figure. We citizens simply have to push back, and we really appreciate your assistance in our doing that. Thank you so much for giving us this time.
Thank you, James. Tyler?
If you have any questions.
No. No clapping, too, by the way, we're okay. You've got a lot of support here.
Thank you.
Tyler, and followed by Valerie Mintz.
I want to donate my time, because I would just be repeat.
Well, just skip it, okay, skip. So, Valerie, Valerie, followed by Norman Lamb.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Valerie Mintz, and actually, I'm not here alone, because I am here to represent Whispering Oaks, where we have 100 units. And most of those units are occupied by single residents, but some do have more than one, and also a pet. I'm very concerned, and they're very concerned, about their well-being, because a lot of these people are older, some of them not, it's a mixed group, but a lot of them are incapacitated, some of them completely, where they, you know, don't get out. And so, they have various different situations. But anyway, my own situation is that on my patio, I actually have four meters, four separate electrical meters. And those, I guess, are not just mine, but for my neighbors as well. And so, this is the way the place is structured. Every so often, you'll have a group of these meters. It's been mentioned that we already have the Larry Hagman, which was unsolicited, radioactive or radiofrequency emitting tower.
Thank you, Valerie.
What?
Your time's up.
My time's up? Okay. Well, I just want to say in closing, that now we're going to have one attached to each of our own homes.
Norma Lamb, followed by Joseph Gilbert.
First off, I understand the, my name's Norma Lamb, and I live in a mobile home park. And mobile home parks that I live in, and places where Valerie lives, we can't opt-out because it's a corporate situation. So, we need you guys to help, otherwise, we're all going to get zapped. I understand your issue, that, you know, I mean, it's a difficult thing, but anything we can do to help you. I wear a, I wear a protection from what EMFs we have, I do what I can, and we have a legal, we have an Ojai Defense Fund in Ojai, that if you need to, I mean, I'm sure they will come, you know, if we need some, get some money to start threatening these people, because they are, like you said, they're invading our privacy, they're invading our right to choose, they're telling us what to do, we don't get to have a decision in this, and you've got a big problem, and if we can help you in any way, let us know, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norm.
Mr. Chair, do we have more speakers?
They have some more, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
You want?
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Joseph Gilbert. First of all, I just want to say that smart people don't want smart meters in their houses, and that we have to look where we take our marching orders from. Do we take it from our corporate paymasters who throw money around to get things done, or do we take it from our concern for our own health and our family's health and our neighbor's health? You have to have the right goals if you want to do the right actions. But I wanted to talk about GMOs just for a minute. I'd like to bring a petition here sometime and have you all sign on, saying that GMOs should be listed on the labels of the foods that they are in. We have a right to know what we're eating, and it's precisely because the corporations that make these altered foods don't want us to know. The reason they don't want us to know what's in there is because we wouldn't buy the stuff if we did. It's obvious. Why are they opposing telling us what's in the food? That's outrageous. Who do they think we are, you know, that we can be forced to eat stuff that we don't choose to eat, and that they don't have any, you know, any obligation to tell us what's in the food? So, that has to be opposed rigorously. I mean, it comes to a point where you can't go along with it anymore, you know, like the corporations have to be pushed back and not think they own and control the world. They don't care about their own health or about our health, you know? Someone has to care, and if it's not ourselves, who's going to care? So, I'll bring the petition sometime soon. Hopefully, I'll be willing to sign it. Thanks.
By the way, I have a petition with me, and I can give it to you if you want it now. I have one.
Good.
Good morning, one and all. I'm Shalom Joshua from Ojai. I want to bring forth the urgency of dealing with the smart meters, and this in the light of hearing that some good things have already taken place, which I dearly appreciate. But this urgency couldn't be more of a factor than it is now. Edison says they are doing it to us now. They say that, given yesterday, the meters are being installed. There was a mailer sent out to each of us, and perhaps to each of you, from Edison about the meters. The remarkable thing is that when you look through this mailer, it does not tell you anything about the meters themselves, or their health effects, or anything that might be a real concern to human beings, their pets, and other living plants, and so on. What they aren't telling you is stuff like this. The smart meter, even according to Edison, is the equivalent of 40 wireless routers, computer routers in your home. Forty times the amount of emissions. What they aren't telling you is that there is a mesh system. It's like steel wool over the entire area that the smart meters function, and that the meter on an individual's house is only, and all of the houses, those meters only represent 10% of the radiofrequency pollution that the system is going to create. They don't mention that 90% of the pollution is the system talking to itself. It's a, it's been called a bizarre system, never seen before. This is a wild concept, untested. You know, I spoke to Edison directly, I said, "Don't you think you ought to find out if this is bad for infants? Don't you think that you should find out if this is bad for elderly people, for persons who are electro-sensitive, for many segments of the population? Don't you want to know before you put these things into the population that they are safe?" And the response I got was, "Well, it would take years for us to find out whether or not that was the case." Ladies and gentlemen, this is something we don't need. We don't need a product that, when it emanates into your kitchen, it will bounce off of your refrigerator, it'll bounce off of your stove, it'll bounce off of your toaster, and each time it's doing that, it's creating more and more effect.
Shalom, thank you, thank you so much. Joseph Stolling, Joseph, followed by Theodora Corden.
Hello, my name is Joe. I'd first off, like to applaud Councilperson Parks for her earlier comments, bringing attention to one of the many issues that press members of our society face today and every day. Hello, we are here today to bring attention to the mounting evidence that abuses in the housing mortgage system have become a burden on our local economy. This collapse in confidence threatens not only personal, not only property values, but the economic stability of the entire region and the welfare of our families. We started months ago doing research, talking to homeowners, reviewing paperwork, attending foreclosure auctions, and asking questions of public officials. Two weeks ago, we sent each of you copies of the recent report by San Francisco Office of the Assessor Recorder entitled "Foreclosure in California: A Crisis of Compliance," which details some of the known issues of systematic failure in the housing market. Today, we would also like to draw your attention to the document titled "Home Wreckers: How Wall Street Foreclosures Are Devastating Communities by the California Reinvestment Coalition." We're here to tell you that the most important issue this body needs to worry about at this time is how to preserve homeownership in our county, and how can we protect our citizens from the illegal and predatory actions of corporate criminals. I would like at this time to introduce Theodore Davit Cornyn, who will be making a statement on the record for our current findings regarding the most important issues. Thank you.
She's our next speaker, thank you. And she's going to be followed by George Corkin, would be the last one.
Good morning to our Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Good morning. And thank you very much for your dedication to the people of Ventura County, and for taking the time to listen to the concerns of citizens like those of us gathered here. One of the most important roles of government is to protect private property rights. I'm actually here, this group is here, as part of Occupy 805 and Occupy Oxnard. Governments provide the structure by which we otherwise puny individuals can band together to protect ourselves, our families, and our possessions from theft and abuse by persons or entities more powerful than ourselves. And of all the forms of individual property, the family home is truly the most precious. Homeownership is both the foundation of the American dream and the bedrock of a healthy middle class. Yet, according to Realty Track, there are 51,584 foreclosed properties available in California right now. That's one in every 265 housing units. This epidemic of foreclosure is creating enormous downward pressure on real estate prices while creating economic turmoil in the community. According to Zillow.com, Ventura's home price index has fallen from $565,000 in May of 2007 to $328,000 in December last year. This is the downward pressure that is putting homeowners underwater and flushing our economy down the toilet. TV pundits insist this foreclosure epidemic is a natural market correction to poor choices made by irresponsible borrowers. The actual evidence points to wide-scale criminal activity on the part of the mortgage and banking industry itself. As our representatives, it is your duty to uphold property rights and due process according to the law. We are shocked to learn that our trust in the county title system has been betrayed. We're here to find out exactly who you really represent and what you plan to do about this problem. We ask that you immediately use all means in your power to halt further foreclosure, all further foreclosure action until systemic review and reform of Ventura County foreclosure practices has been carried out. We plan to return until this matter is fully set right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is George Corkin, the last one, George.
Ventura County Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name is George Sorkin. It has become apparent to the public that we're not going to get out of these financial crises until we fix the mortgage foreclosure problems we're facing. Recently, Federal Reserve Chairman Ben Bernanke wrote a white paper that outlined that the continuation of relying heavily on foreclosures to deal with the mortgage crisis is costly and inefficient for housing market, and leading to deterioration of homes, and weighing down property values. In the aforementioned San Francisco Assessor's Office audit, the foreclosure crisis, a crisis of compliance, in that audit, it was found that 99% of the mortgages audited were found to have some questionable activity. 84% had clear violations of the law, and 66% had four or more violations in foreclosure. Under the federal TARP bill, bailout was presumed that the banks would, in turn, give homeowners a fair shake. However, under the list of bank malfeasance, MERS, et cetera, there is one more: loan modification fraud. The banks put people through several loan modification attempts, delaying loan modification and for the slightest reasons. And then they have people apply for the modifications again and again. They don't do this to try to qualify people for the modification, but to take the government money, who pays them each time they take the homeowner through the home modification process. They have no intention of modifying the loans. That's why we call it loan modification fraud. We are down, we're in a downward spiral of debt, deficit, and unemployment. With each foreclosed home, we are closing the door to opportunity. The county has within its power to stop illegal foreclosures, and insists that the banks begin to make bridges between homeowners and restore sanity to our economy. The law is all we have. If we abandon that, we're lost. If we are silenced, and our government has no ears, and our voices fall on stone, our country is lost. Thank you. Oh, by the way, DOS Williams is having free foreclosure workshops for mortgage modifications, and I think the county should do something similar to that. I mean, there are things that can be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George, and thank all of you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've heard that about the idea, these banks wanting you to come in and do this modification, and they keep coming back, and I think you pay a fee when you do that, and that's crazy. I agree with you on that. Let me, I don't know if you're an expert in this, but it was interesting, I heard the other day on the news, that the average person that gets foreclosed, though, or starts that, hadn't paid their mortgage in 22 months. Is that true?
During some of this process, the banks encourage the people to start making payments again, and it's all kinds of, you know, there's a, there's a.
I agree. I was just concerned, because there is still the idea, there's responsible people out there that are just struggling, but the average, if a person's not paying their mortgage, at some point, if you had a mortgage on them, you'd say, "You're supposed to pay me," though, right?
Perhaps, perhaps I would, you know, go ahead and foreclose on them, but I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. I just want to make sure we understood that, but I heard that modification issue is a deal, because the idea that it's hard when you're unemployed to make your payments, there's no question about that, too. So, we're in a difficult struggle between both of them, but the idea that the banks are doing this, I had some other people that we'd turned over to the congressman and everybody else, trying to get this thing, trying to figure out how to get these banks, you know, if you're going to go through modification, I need to pay, if I pay once, that's all I pay, I don't keep paying just new modifications.
Well, if you make one missed loan payment, or one late loan payment, can get you into foreclosure right now. And the banks are dual-tracking, they're telling you, "Come on in and do a loan modification," and they're slowing down the process on that end, while they're speeding up the foreclosure end.
Yeah, I mean, and I know some banks, and they tell me, the banks, they don't gain anything in these foreclosure issues, usually it costs them a fortune, because.
Well, the banks aren't really going to lose money in the foreclosure, they're only representing the investors.
Right, I know, because somebody else has that mortgage someplace on Wall Street.
Yeah, they're just, they're representing somebody else's mortgage, so they don't really care.
Yeah, it's a lot of, it's a pain, yeah, I agree, I agree.
So, if we can do something about it, and the most important thing that I want to bring your attention to is that the county is in trouble, the people in the county are in trouble, unemployment is going crazy, and we need jobs. And if we can stop this, this is the biggest drain on our economy right now.
It's very difficult, because.
If there's something we can do about it.
You can buy homes cheaper than you can build them, if you can buy homes cheaper than you can build them, then nobody's going to be out building, nobody's going to have jobs, yeah, there's no question, it's tough.
We need help.
Thank you, George.
All right, thank you.
And thank all of you for sharing this morning. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make two comments. One, this foreclosure crisis is a real issue out there, and I know you've made some representative One, this foreclosure crisis is a real issue out there, and I know you've made some representations about what the county can and cannot do, and I'm certainly going to be talking with our county council to find out what we can and cannot do because it is a, there's no question, many banks are abusing this whole issue of loan modification and all that. And with regard to the smart meters, same thing. We're going to keep working at this. I think you make a compelling case, and we'll see what we can do here, but we want to talk with county council. We want to also see what Edison's response is to our request to at least make sure there's the opt-out provision. But I have a real concern about the mobile home parks because the mobile home parks, you know, each resident won't have that option to opt out. And so we will, we're going to keep working on this one with you. So I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor.
Let me just make one little comment on this smart meter deal, too. I appreciate you coming to do it. One thing that I believe, you see it from the president on down, we got to go smart meters, push this whole deal. There's a balance between this environmental issue of, you know, all this stuff we got to deal with because I think sometimes it gets pushed so far that I'm willing to put people's lives at risk over the environmental. And that's where you get the extreme side. You've got to be real careful on this issue. So I know a lot of us, you know, believe that we want to do everything we can environmentally, but at some point, it gets crazy. And so you've got to watch out that you've got a president who's saying, "Go do this" when there's all this other evidence out, it's harmful to the people that he's supposed to represent. So be careful.
Thank you.
I would just thank you for bringing the information forward, and I would, in addition to your own local, at your home, having the meter, I wonder what the accumulation of these frequencies has because even if you choose not to have one and your neighbors all do, you still have that effect. So I'd be interested in looking at that, too. Thank you for bringing it forward.
And thank you. You have our support. Thank you for sharing this morning. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the board comments. Supervisor Foy.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and that was my comments for today.
Okay. Ms. Parks?
Yes, I was able to attend a nice groundbreaking of the Wendy Road overpass in Newberry Park, and this is a...
We're still in session? Please, go ahead.
This is a great project that the City of Thousand Oaks threw in a lot of money towards, as well as the Transportation Commission, the state, and the federal government. It will be a project that's going to relieve traffic congestion, but it's also going to have a first-of-its-kind separated bicycle lane, which will be nice over the freeway there, and the first in Southern California, so that will hopefully start a precedent and make it safer, not only for driving, but also for cyclists. So that was nice to be able to attend that. I also attended the Go Red for Women luncheon out in Westlake Village, and this was an emphasis on heart health and realizing that the number-one killer of women isn't cancer, it's actually from strokes and heart attacks. So a message that needs to get out there. And then I know that a few of us attended, the medical center had the opening, the grand opening of the pediatric intensive care unit, and that was just wonderful to see and the wonderful efforts of our staff that really worked hard and worked well with the state of California, with OSHPAD, and was able to get us this tremendous advantage, you know, for youth, for pediatrics. You don't have to be transferred to Los Angeles and able to handle for the entire county, and that's just a wonderful addition. I'm sure we'll hear more about that. And then last night, also was able to attend a recognition of firefighters and our deputies by the St. Pascal Baelons Men's Club, and it was, they do it every year, and it's just so nice at these organizations, like the Elks Club had one, I think, last week. Gives us an opportunity to recognize our firefighters and our deputies because so often they don't get that recognition, and they do incredible work in protecting our communities. So that was nice to attend also. And I believe that ends my comments. Don't have any closing in honor of, which is a fortunate thing.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to adjourn the board in memory of Virginia Unruh, wife of Bob Unruh, Ojai School Board member, longtime established family in Ojai. And Anne Marie Reinhardt was a esteemed Spanish and science teacher at Buena High School, and as well as the other people on this list. We had a Public Utilities Commission hearing in Ojai on Golden State Water. I had my staff in attendance at both of the hearings, and we were able to read a letter into the record regarding that, but we have lots of concerns about the Golden State Water situation up in Ojai. The annual meeting of the Downtown Ventura Organization was last Thursday. Good to see Downtown Ventura, I really think, is becoming sort of the young people's hub in Ventura County. I mean, it has really become a magnet, so they've done a great job. And the Downtown Ventura Organization is doing a lot to improve that downtown area, and we all benefit from that. I attended the Rio Linda Neighborhood Council, and Supervisor Zaragosa, you and I have half and half of that area. It's split there. So I was able to identify with the new redistricting, what areas I had, and it was good to meet those folks. I also was really impressed at the pediatric opening that we were able to attend on Friday and to see the fruits of that effort and, you know, people pushing. You put it together, there's just a lot happening, and a lot happening in sort of our healthcare agency world, and it's just so much positive for the residents of Ventura County. So again, congratulations to Mr. Powers and everybody else in healthcare who got that going. And then the Girl Scouts had their 100th celebration last Saturday at the Fairgrounds, and it was a real kick in the pants and a treat to be there and just see all of these women who had been Girl Scouts themselves now mentoring these young girls and taking them to the next level and stuff. So it was a great wholesome family day. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and also...
Chair, I did leave one thing out. We went through the consent agenda really quick, and I just wanted to mention one thing that I think is wonderful, a program that we do do through our area agency on aging, and this is a job training program for retired seniors, so they need to get back in the marketplace, they need to get their skills back, and how nice to be able to have funding for that program. And, you know, they are unemployed when they need to get out there and get jobs, too, so it's good that they can get that training, which is essential to getting back into the marketplace. So kudos on that program.
And I agree, it's an excellent program. Thank you so much. I'd like to adjourn in memory of these folks on this list, and also thank again Dr. Bob for that PICU, the grand opening that we had the other day, which is excellent for our children, they can see here in Ventura County as opposed to going to LA County. I also, Bill and I, one of my staff members, attended an EPC meeting, and good information on that. I went over to Ramona School to read to the children on Dr. Sue's name the other day, so it was a lot of fun. Kenny Garnett, first way you're... Yeah, it was fun. Okay, now we're going to go to item 27. Barry?
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa. Members Floyd, Mr. Powers. Short, short board today. Today's just a modification to an existing contract. Additional funds were awarded from EDD down to us to use for this program or this fiscal year of $94,000, of which we're putting into the contract with the Ventura Adult School that's running our allied health training programs right now, and that allows us to add about 10 additional slots for actual training and support services associated with occupations that they are training in the allied health industry. So that's the proposal. If you have any questions, it's fairly straightforward in this case.
Any questions, Gabe?
Let me just ask real quick. This is additional funds that we got?
This is additional funds, yes.
That came from where?
From the state EDD. From time to time, the jurisdictions have monies that are going to expire by the end of the program year, and they redistribute those funds out to areas that can use them. So we said we will use it.
You said you'll use it, and you're going to train 30 people or something with it?
We're expanding our existing, an additional 10 slots for the $94,000.
And so it costs us about $10,000 a person to train?
Yes, and that includes the training curriculum part and support services that they need to transition into the work, whether it's transportation, those type things, in order to support them.
Okay. Is this a program that's been real successful at all, or has it been successful?
Yes, it's achieved their performance goals and so forth, and we're in the middle of that year at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
It is nice to get reports back on the success of these programs, how many people were actually placed and continue to have a job if we're following those through. I hope we are.
Yeah, and we can add that to the year-end WIB report, really. We can add a kind of a portion associated with the performance.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea because the other thing, what I was asking now, I was just wondering if we're spending $10,000, if I was somebody else, an employer, who you said, "Listen, I'll give you 25% of their salary out of that $10,000," and they would work, and they're great, and they'd have a job after they're done, or something like that. I'm just wondering if that'd be good to find out if we really have the success, they go into jobs, and there's some kind of success with them.
Yeah, and those could be avenues, when we say support structures, could be on the job training out, and I'm not saying that that is an option. So we do do an annual report of WIB and our performance standards associated with that, and we can drill down into a little bit more detail of the program specifics.
Yeah, that'd be great to see, if people say that we're spending money and people are getting some jobs, great.
Thank you, Barry.
And those requests for proposals are getting out to, for example, the Caneo Valley Unified School District because they have a job training program in the medical sciences, too.
Yep, they go countywide when they're out.
Excellent. Thank you.
They get up the hill, huh?
Yes.
Okay, it was a pleasure.
They put just enough fuel to get to the base of the hills.
It's very steep.
I'll make a motion. Thank you, Barry.
All right, thanks.
We need a second.
No, but I'm there with you. All right, I mean, yes. I am, I have something to add.
And yes for Foy.
I haven't voted yet.
I'll be happy to take your vote all the time.
Is that a yes?
It's been accurate. When I see the results.
Okay. Number 28. Oh, that passes, right? Okay. Number 28.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa. Members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm David Stoll from the CEO's office, and I'm the analyst for HCA. Today, the CEO is recommending the appointment of three to the Gold Coast Healthcare Plan Commission. The Gold Coast Healthcare Plan is empowered to enter into contracts for the provision of Medi-Cal health services throughout Ventura County. The board, the commission, is made up of 11 members, and three of those are, their term is expiring March 16th. We have three recommendations today. Two are actually reappointments, and one is a new appointment. The new appointment is David Gleyer. He's the VP of Finance, CFO of Community Memorial Hospital. He'll be taking the place of Rick Jarvis of Las Robles. The last two appointments are actually reappointments. We recommend the reappointment of Catherine Rodriguez, who represents the CMC. And finally, the reappointment of Lanyard Dial to the seat held by the physicians representing Ventura County Medical Association. All these appointments will be four-year appointments. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? No, we got a first and a second. Gabe?
Yes.
Four yeses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 29, and...
The smart meters are doing that.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa. Members of the board, Mr. Powers, Kelly Shirck, County Executive Office, Human Resources. Today, before you use the board letter to amend the title of one job classification and delete another, and have the first public hearing regarding the adoption of an ordinance to place five of the classifications in unclassified service. The first classification we're amending is the Director of Water Resources. We're changing the title only to Director of Water and Sanitation to more accurately reflect the work that's being conducted by the incumbent. So it's a title change only, there's no change in salary. We're also recommending that this be placed in the unclassified service. Delete the obsolete Director of Environmental and Energy Resources. This is a classification that's no longer used, so we need to get it out of the classification system. Additionally, we're asking to place four positions in the unclassified service. In 2003, when these classifications were created, the ordinance that required to put them in the unclassified service was left off of the board letter. So this recommended action will correct that and place them all in the unclassified service. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Gabe? Motion to approve?
They don't want to be called sanitation.
Guess not. Thank you.
I need a second. No, we got a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you.
The title of the ordinance, "An Amendment to the Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 1, Chapter 3, Article 4, Civil Service System, Dealing with Director, Water and Sanitation, Director Transportation, Director Watershed Management, Director PWA Central Services, Director Engineering Services."
Thank you. Item 30, General Services Agency.
Morning, Chair Zaragosa. Members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Greg Bergman from the General Services Agency, and I'm here for the 10th year now for the Oakview Park and Resource Center, and today we are asking that you direct the preparation of the benefit assessment. Answer any questions if you'd like.
I don't have any questions. It's been a great win-win. We say it every year, the community steps forward, pays for the school. We try to help with things like facilitating the benefit assessment district, and as a result, a community that had sort of no focal point, no park, nothing, classic unincorporated development of the county that, you know, was not well-planned, has something that really focuses that community now. So I move the adoption of this annual...
And thank you so much for your work.
Seven.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Item 31. Mr. Pakala.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa. Members of the board, Mr. Powers. Ready Pakala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency.
I'm going to call something different.
Just got to prove.
The item before you this morning is for award of a construction contract for the Moore Park Desalter Project pilot well test. I have a PowerPoint presentation, it's about seven minutes long. With your permission, I'd like to go through this presentation. As your board is aware, Waterworks District Number One provides water and sanitation services to the city of Moore Park and areas to the north and west of the city. The purpose of the Moore Park Desalter Project is to mainly to reduce dependence on imported water and stabilize water rates for district customers. The other major benefits of this project are to export salts from these desalters to the Pacific Ocean and also to create underground storage within a groundwater basin, I'll explain more about the groundwater basin, so that we can capture more groundwater for beneficial uses. And we're also having migration of salts from this salty groundwater basin into good-quality east La Poses basin, and some of our wells are experiencing higher salts now in District 19 and District 1. Even Cayega's underground storage project wells have experienced some salts. We believe this project, Moore Park Desalter Project, will help minimize the migration of salts northwards into the high-quality water. And also, when project is implemented, we will be able to comply with the salts TMDL for the wastewater treatment plants. It will really help the entire Cayega District watershed, Moore Park wastewater treatment plant, Semin Valley, Thousand Oaks... plant, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, Camrio, and Camrose Water District wastewater treatment plants. And the other benefit would be, it would improve the chloride levels within these areas for agricultural use within this Los Poses basin. As your board is aware, this agriculture is important for Ventura County, and we have been working together to come up with a high-quality water in the Los Poses basin. For us to accomplish this project, the salinity management pipeline done by Cayega's, which is also known as Brine Line, is very important. Without that Brine Line, we will not be able to invest money into desalters and produce high-quality water locally. As you see on this slide here, you see the Pacific Ocean, that's where Cayega's has already completed a outfall. They have put in a pipe about mile-long into the ocean to discharge this Brine Line. So far, Cayega's has, the estimated cost of Cayega's Brine Line or SMP are $210 million that's go from Port Wayne Amy to Camrio, through Moore Park, to Simi Valley. So far, Cayega's has completed almost 50% of this project from Port Wayne Amy outfall to about north of Camrio Airport to Camrose Water District Sanitation Plant. The next phase they're working on is from the Camrose Water Treatment Plant through Cayega's to the Moore Park area, and the proposal is to bring that SMP to the intersection of Hitch Boulevard and Los Angeles Avenue. And our plan is to complete the Moore Park Desalter Project by the time Cayega's brings their SMP to the Moore Park area, so that we can start producing local water. The other benefits I also listed are, it will drought-proof the area, if there's a problem with the imported water supply, we have local water that we could use within the district service areas, and also, of course, there'll be a local investment, locally that'll be invested for this project. This slide shows you different groundwater basins. You see different groundwater, all of these groundwater basins are within what's called a Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. As your board is aware, Chair Zaragoza sits on Fox Canyon GMA, Sir Roger Bennett is an alternate this year, but he was on this Fox Canyon GMA, and Fox Canyon GMA's primary responsibility is to make sure that the basins are coming to safe yield. What you see on this slide is the yellow, that's what we call a South Los Poses Basin, this is a shallow groundwater basin, the groundwater levels are about 50 feet deep from the surface in this area, it's about 200-foot-thick aquifer where we have potential for us to reclaim this salty groundwater and use it for beneficial uses for the residents and also for agricultural communities in this area. And here is the proposed Moore Park Desalter Project. This shows you the district sphere of influence, and also district boundaries, and where the Moore Park wastewater treatment plant is, this is the Hitch Boulevard, and here is where the Moore Park Desalter and the proposed well site, that we are requesting your board award the construction contract to do some pilot testing right in this area here. The project in front of you is award of this construction contract. What this project will do is construct three engineering test holes, and one monitoring well, and also two test wells. The estimated cost of this project, the total cost of the project is $468,000. We were able to get 47% of this money from Fox Canyon GMA as a grant. We'd like to thank Fox Canyon GMA and their staff for this $220,000 grant, and this grant is really consistent with the county strategic plan, where we are looking for outside monies to do our capital infrastructure projects. This slide shows, this is the Hitch Boulevard, Los Angeles Avenue, and here are the location of the wells that we would be drilling as part of this project. Here's a cross-section of the test wells, and also well design for the monitoring well. In 2010, we prepared a preliminary design report, based on that report, we identified 5,000 acre-feet per year as the yield for this proposed desalter project. This test results will confirm that yield, either it would say it's going to be something different than what we have done so far. It will also test for the water quality, based on the water quality, we'll be able to refine the design parameters for the Moore Park Desalter Project. Once that's completed, then we'll go back and finalize our design report, so we can come up with more accurate information about the cost, about the design parameters for the proposed project. Once this report is completed, we would be going through the planning process, that would include for us to bring this to stakeholders, namely the Los Poses Users Group, where we have all the pumper meeting every other week to discuss how to bring the Los Poses Basin to safe yield. That's done under the GMA, and our proposal right now is to present this to Los Poses Users Group, then Fox Canyon GMA, then we will start the EIR process, after the EIR is brought back to your board for certification. Should your board approve this EIR, then we will go through the permits and property acquisition. At this time, our proposal is to get the planning, EIR, all of the tasks needed within two years, and another two and a half years for design and construction of this $43 million project. And again, as I said, our plan is to complete our project by the time Cayega's brings their SMP to this location. That concludes my presentation, I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Reddy. Any questions? Parks?
Thank you. Just to be clear on this, the project, as you mentioned, the goal is to provide local water supply during imported supply shortages, so we'll be able to use groundwater for the project to provide to homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
For residences? And it refers to storm water, create underground storage to capture more storm water. And so, the question I have, is it also capturing wastewater from the treatment plant?
It would be capturing treated wastewater that meets the original water quality.
Okay, so it isn't just storm water, it's also water from our sewer treatment plants?
Treated wastewater.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass on this vote, because I just, I still haven't gotten past the concern of what else is in the water that comes from sewer treatment plants, and that it gets then, you know, recycled into residential tap water, so I'm just gonna hold off on that vote. And it's just, it's just a concern that I have.
Such treated water.
If I may, when we do this testing, we will be testing the water quality as part of this well test. At that time, we'll be working with the state health department to make sure that the treatment that we designed for would comply with all the Title 22 requirements.
And I understand that, but there are also things like pharmaceuticals, and that just don't come out of the water very well, so I will oppose the motion.
But aren't we, like, right now, in where you're at, and all the waste, the treated wastewater is already being used, isn't it? All of it being used? Or not? Which is going to the golf...
Simi Valley does not use any treated wastewater at this time. Simi Valley discharges all of the tertiary-treated wastewater into Arroyo Simi. Moore Park wastewater treatment plant uses the tertiary-treated water for our customers.
Right, for your customers, in the golf courses and parkways, and so it's not...
Correct.
So, the idea is that, I guess, asking for that question, is she looking, what she was asking, is it directly going into, when it's treated, into some type of drinking water? Or is it, you're saying what's coming out of Simi is part of the water that's going into the ground that we're digging? It's already being done right now anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Because they're letting it go into the creek, aren't they?
They are letting it go to the creek.
It's going to the creek, it seeps to the ground, gets into the water now, and we're pumping that water currently.
Yes.
And what you're gonna do is you're gonna filter that water at a greater rate than it's already being filtered now.
Yes.
Is that, am I correct?
Yes, it is being pumped, there are different sources of groundwater, and it is being pumped in some wells that we are pumping into the system, yes.
I want to be clear, this process is going to increase the amount of treatment of the water that's currently, that's currently going into the groundwater.
Yes, sir, it will increase, it will put in a membrane process, and we have to work with the state health department to make sure that there's enough buffer, and how long it took for the wastewater to percolate into the ground, what's the travel time, we have to figure all of those things before we go through the EIR process.
And it additionally increases the amount of wastewater that is pumped into the ground?
Yes.
And tell us, how does it do that?
It increases the wastewater that we are pumping from the ground for beneficial...
No, she said into the ground. Does it increase the amount of wastewater being pumped into the ground?
The filtration into it, but...
It's not into the ground, into the surface, and using it into agricultural uses and potable uses.
The question is, does it increase the amount of wastewater being filtered into the ground? Or does it simply treat the wastewater that is currently being filtered into the ground?
It does both, because once we create underground storage, you are filtering it through the media, geological media, it's filtering through it, then we pump it out, we are going through advanced treatment before we put into the potable water system.
I understand what you're saying. That water's gonna come, we're gonna treat it, we're gonna put it into ponds, which is gonna seep through the ground and be as a natural treated, as we've been, for millions of years, we've been treating. And then you're saying when you pull it back out, like any water you pull out, it's gonna be re-treated again. So, is that any different than what's happening currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, this water is migrating several miles into a different aquifer.
That's, that was the question, yeah.
Different aquifer. This project would create more underground storage, and bring this water into this storage area, then pump it out and provide more advanced treatment.
Right, okay.
So, because you're creating more storage, you're gonna allow more of it to percolate into the, into that aquifer?
That's right.
That's what it is.
Correct.
You're not, it's not like you're pumping more in, you're just gonna create more because you're, because you're, because you're creating more capacity.
More storage.
More storage, then more can circulate into that.
Yes, sir.
And then, as a result of that, you have extra treatment when it comes out.
Yes, sir.
Because currently, it's going into some other aquifer automatically? Or it's going down the creek and out the ocean, or what?
Right now, all of this water from Simi Valley wastewater treatment plant and Moore Park wastewater treatment plant has filled this shallow south Los Poses basin, it's spilling into Camrio right now. And what this would do is it would create more storage and capture more within this Los Poses basin, instead of spilling into Camrio.
It reduces the contamination and the other...
Right, and Camrio also are experiencing high salts in their...
Which is coming out of this water?
This water.
That you're gonna treat before, when it goes in.
We'll treat and use it within our service area.
Use it ourselves, so we'll have better water, that won't be contaminated, another clean water.
Exactly, right.
Correct. And Camrio is also looking at the desalter project to treat that water which has been spilling over into their service area.
Right.
It's a preventive item.
Yeah, okay. I think I, I think I understand.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
Will you a second?
Yeah, a second.
Down in your area, I want to make sure you're...
Yeah, a second, yeah. Oh, are we using the machine now?
We're okay now, all in favor?
Roberta, or wasn't it? No? No, I guess not.
Okay.
Well, you voted for me now.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, just do this one more.
Yes.
Yes.
And I voted yes.
Three, three yeses and one no. Thank, it passes. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
And we have item number 32, my recommendation for Joab Regon, well-qualified person. Yes?
I have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second. Okay, there we go.
Can I take a verbal?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, passes. We're gonna take a, just a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back for the 10 o'clock. Just five minutes. We're gonna take a, just a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back for the ten o'clock. Just five minutes.
We're gonna reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting, item number nineteen.
Good morning, Supervisors Zaragoza, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Stephen Hance, Ventura County's Treasurer, Tax Collector. If it does not displease the Board, I would like to respond to a question asked by Supervisor Bennett in February before I turn to this month's report on the status of the investment fund. Supervisor Bennett requested a report that analyzed the collateral supporting the four federal agencies whose financial instruments form the greater part of the portfolio. Mr. Hanson, who is at the dentist today, and of course, I would not care to speculate on which of us will have more fun. Mr. Hanson and I are not aware of any report in the investment community that really goes deeply into analysis of the merits of the mortgages that are the nominal collateral for those four agency funds. We follow the reports in the trade publications and professional journals. We see, receive summaries from the brokers with whom we deal, and we apply our own knowledge and experience to the decisions that we make. And what we know ultimately, of course, is that the actual collateral for those financial instruments is the overall creditworthiness of the United States government. There are probably, well, in fact, I'm sure that there are reports available from Congress that discuss the underlying collateral in more detail, but the investment community, so far as I know, doesn't have any such report. Mrs. Ralston is handing up a summary of the ratings issued by the three major rating companies on those agencies. Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae are rated marginally lower than the other two, but all four are rated by each of the three rating companies in the highest or next to the highest category. We could get more detailed reports, research reports, although it has not been our practice to do so because they are expensive. Mrs. Ralston, who is a supervisor in the Investment Work Group, has prepared a summary of the cost of acquiring those reports, and the estimate is around $4,000, which is an expense for which I have no budget allocation. And I do not believe, based on what the Standard and Poor's, for example, has told me, that those reports still do not discuss in any significant detail the status of the mortgages that form the nominal collateral. These four reports would cost us $4,000. We could subscribe to the Standard and Poor's credit portal for about $6,000 a year, which would give us any number of Standard and Poor's reports, or we could subscribe to the Bloomberg service for about $20,000 a year. Mr. Hanson and I believe that those services provide far more information than is necessary to effectively manage the investment fund, because they discuss all investments, equities, municipal bonds, everything, the full range, for the same price. You can't buy just fixed income, for example. And we don't recommend subscribing to those services, and again, that would be a budget issue for an allocation that I don't have. If the Board requests those individual reports, I will, of course, acquire them. But Mr. Hanson asked me to say that he does not think they will add significant value to our collective decision-making on the fund. And, and so I will await or entertain further Board comment on that issue.
Thank you for, thank you for looking into it. Since I made the request, I'm certainly not asking you to go out and buy those reports. I would ask you if there was some kind of quick search, it was in a, I thought it was in a news article, and shortly before, I mean, within a week or two of my, of you coming to the Board and me making that comment, may have been within a week even. So whatever they, and sometimes news reports are not right, but the article, it was like the article was about the fact that they had, did not have very much collateral backing them.
Well, yes.
So if you, if you saw the article, that might give you an idea of what it is that they were referring to, and maybe it's a misrepresentation of their situation. It seemed outrageous, and like you said, whether the loans themselves are collateral, you know, I mean, how the loans themselves stack up, I don't know. So if you, if you can't find it, you can't find it, but I would not ask you to go subscribe to four to $6,000 worth of reports, simply because there was one article, but I think the article merits at least attempt to try to look into that.
I confess that I did not direct research into non-investment, directly investment-related reports, but I, but I will tell you, yes, we read all the time, especially that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are significantly, they were the buyers of last resort of a lot of bad mortgages.
Thank you.
I know that the two of mine, that they own, are in pretty decent shape, but I can't, can't vouch for the other hundred or 200 million mortgages that they, that they have. But I guess, for my next report, I will see what I can find in other avenues than the traditional investment reports. And thank you for allowing me to respond to that question. Turning to this month's report, if I may. Mr. Hanson's report is, as usual, incisive, precise, and concise. It tells you the relevant facts in exactly the right number of words. This report is written as of the status of the fund of January 31st. The average fund balance in January was $1.9 billion. The yield was .67%, and the weighted average days to maturity was 379 days, which is a few days over the investment policy limit, but is quickly remedied. These numbers reflect the usual slight decline in the fund balance from December, and a continued lessening of the yield because current reinvesting opportunities in January were subject to the continuing low rates at the short end of the yield curve, which is one of the charts at the end of the letter. A snapshot preview of next month's report will show a modest uptick in the yield, and I want to emphasize the word modest. Based in part, for example, on so small a matter as a two-basis-point increase in the rates on purchases of 270-day commercial paper, two basis points is .02%. And there has been a modest increase in those rates. And it will also reflect the purchase of $52 million of corporate notes, which I mentioned last time, which have an effective yield of 15 to 19 basis points above the commercial paper rate. So they will start playing into the yield report. The next report will also reflect Mr. Hanson has reduced the average days to maturity of the fund to 360 days, and today it is down to 356 days, in anticipation of the possibility of investing some of the soon-to-arrive $400 million in secured property tax payments in some of the higher-yield investment possibilities that are in the two- and three-year part of the yield curve, which is contained, as an example, in the chart that you have. So by reducing the average days to maturity, Mr. Hanson can take advantage of slightly longer-term instruments that will provide a higher yield. That concludes my report. I will, of course, entertain questions.
Any questions? None, thank you. Motion to approve.
Are we eyeing it?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Item twenty. Thank you. It's a public hearing on park rates.
Morning, Chairman Zaragoza, members of the Board. Mr. Powers, for the record, Ron Van Dyke, General Services Deputy Director, here this morning for a public hearing for a rent-and-fee schedule. I'd like to highlight two specific items of adjustment in the rent-and-fee. First one is credit card payments. We're using the extension of our current reservation system to allow our customers to pay for their camping, once occupied with a credit card, instead of using checks or cash. This will help reduce handling of our cash by our rangers, and it'll help, hopefully, increase our usage, because a lot of people actually have told us that, you know, I'd like to camp, but I don't have any cash or a check, all I have is a debit card or a credit card, and we don't take that in the field. So we're hoping to get an increase in use, not lose customers, because that's the wave of the future now. People, you know, you stay in a Starbucks, somebody weighs their phone in front of the, you know, the cash register to pay for their coffee. So everything's going electronic. So we're hoping that'll help us all around, as far as the rangers and their collections and the customers. And that's the focus of it, was for more customer base. The second item is a little more contentious, unfortunately. We've had, known of at least three vendors, if not more, that are using the Rincon Parkway as a business. They're renting RVs out to people and cycling their RVs through the Rincon, and we've had numerous, numerous complaints every year because of this venture. They're following the rules specifically, with the exception of the fact they're running businesses out of the parks without permits or a lease agreement, which is, is the issue that we have, and we had no mechanism for technically tracking them or proving that they were doing it other than verbal. Working with county council, we were able to restructure some language that will allow us to better manage this and hold them more accountable to this. That'll follow up in an ordinance, the actual teeth of that will follow up in an ordinance, which we'll be bringing in in about two weeks. The current guidance in the rent-and-fee will be extending the stay-out period for the Rincon from seven days to 14 days, to try to preclude some of that business activity. The ordinance will have language in it that'll allow us to actually manage the vehicle's owner instead of the vehicle's license plate for use of the park, which will give us a little bit more teeth to manage these businesses.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So the vehicle's staying there, and it's, people are renting it, essentially?
They are, essentially, yes.
And so because it stays there, no one else gets a chance?
Nobody else gets a chance. A lot of our local people are the ones that bring it to our attention. It's the same people, they come and ask us if they wanted to rent and do this. So it's a well-known, unfortunately, business opportunity down there of getting a spot.
And no permit? Okay, any, this is a public hearing, I don't have any.
What's this paddle-ball court?
Oh, we, we changed out our tennis courts, we're rehabbed to paddle-ball courts through donations from the Lions Club and a paddle-ball organization, and we had to establish a fee rate for the paddle-ball courts for an annual, for a day reservation.
Did you already have it on the tennis courts?
It's now currently in place of the tennis courts. We have no more tennis courts.
Okay.
I, I have some questions on the, we have a new question park that's going to open up, and I think people will probably want to start reserving their slots soon, as soon as they can, no doubt, because it is very popular out in Santa Rosa Valley. And I know that we're looking at establishing fees for it on this.
The fees, the fees are already established in the rent-and-fee under arenas, so they're already in place.
And the, a couple of questions that I have on that. One is that, looking at the neighboring park district just down the road, they're charging over twice as much. So I'm just wondering if we want to look at the marketplace for renting arenas, and some big events coming, $75 a day compared to $200 a day down the road. Will certainly get us more business, but I don't know if it's, you know, going to provide the revenue that we need, and so I.
Even with the, even doing the math, which I've already done. Even with the, even doing the math, which I've already done, raising the rates and the number of events we're allowed to run a year, we're never going to break even out there unless we get a lot of day use.
And so that gets me to the next question, and I'm wondering if we could get in an analysis in terms of, we're charging for parking and charging for bringing a trailer and using it and renting it, and there's so many different charges. My preference would be not to charge for parking. We have a new trailhead and bridge over to the Thousand Oaks Open Space Lands there in Hill Canyon. They don't charge for parking in any of their parks. So I just, to me, if we raise the cost for the events so that they're comparable with other entities that rent for arenas, we could then not have to pay for parking. That's what I'd like to look at.
We have parking in all of our regional parks. The only two parks that we don't charge day-use parking for are the beaches because of the limited parking spaces down there.
And additionally, because of the layout there, I'm afraid people will then just start parking all along the road, and that's not a good thing.
The road's all going to be marked, no parking, no parking zones.
On both sides of the road?
Both sides of the road.
And then, as far as you expect the camp host to be in charge of seeing that everyone is paying their parking fees, and people come in to just have lunch for, you know, 25 minutes, they have to pay to do that? I just, I do have concerns.
That's what our current policy is in the rent-and-fee for all of our regional parks. This would be the only exception to that policy, that every park we pay.
Except for the two.
We bring in a revenue of approximately $80,000 a year countywide through the system for parking, and that's nowhere near what the use of the facility gets, because there's a lot of people don't pay for their parking. They come in and use the facility. That offsets a lot of our use costs. Sets off the paper costs for the restrooms and things of that nature that people do come in and use. That's where we get our offsets for that. And it also, from the sheriff's perspective, having payment, I did talk to the sheriffs up in Ojai, and they, we were, at one time, we were looking at not having any day-use fees at all until we looked at the revenue, what the revenue was, but the sheriffs came back and said, no, we don't like that idea. We like it the way it is because it's actually reduced crime and problems within the parks, because they have a mechanism now to manage it. We do have an annual pass system that is very economical, that allows you to use the park unlimited for the year. Seniors are only $25 for, to use the park as often as you want. A family can get it, a normal family can get it for, I think it's $52, for years' pass. And if you're riding your horse every day, with less than a month, you're going to pay for that pass.
And how much is it then to park at the park?
It's $2 during the week and $4 on the weekend.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I just, the one thing I would ask you to review is to raise the cost of the arenas for events so that it's equivalent with others. It just, it makes sense, you know? I would look at that.
Okay, this is a, go ahead.
Is there anything new on this, insurance requirements?
No, insurance, all stayed the same.
All stayed the same?
Yes.
And we require them to get their own insurance?
Yes, for events, they're required to get insurance and a permit as part of that. We issue them a permit, day-use permit to use the facility, and they're required to carry their own liability insurance.
Okay, does that, doesn't deter anybody, does it?
No, no, not for the big events, because they already carry insurance.
If you added a fee to it, once you do it, you sign this, you do it, it's automatically included, we made some money off that piece, I mean, make it easier for people. I'm just curious if it makes any difference, though. But if it doesn't, that's fine. Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve this.
This is a public hearing. I don't have any speakers. Anybody like to speak on this? I'll close the public hearing.
And I'll go ahead and make the motion. $2 isn't a lot to charge for parking, so that's not a big concern.
The state charges $12 to park to go hike.
And we'll look at the arena costs in the future, so, but at least initially, that's good.
I always try to, I try to, any new facility we open, start out slow and not whack them real hard with a high fee initially, and then, you know, work our way up, work our way up a little bit. We don't want to shock them. We did the same thing out of Tampa when we opened up the new day-use area out there. People say, oh, you could charge more for this. Well, I got an initial run on it, now it's gone dry.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's a fine.
Plus the taxpayer paid to put these things up, too, so they feel like.
It's a fine balance.
And it would be great to see all the reservations come in for this one. I know it's.
They can start making them now, it's just, it's in the system.
Okay, I'll let them know. So I'll go ahead and make that motion if I can.
Okay. Second? Second by point? All in favor? Something's not working here. Yep. Yes. Yep, it worked. Thank you. Okay. Our next item is human trafficking in parks, who's going to help us with that? Seroptimus?
It's not on the calendar yet, but I do have a resolution here, and I, as I understand, we have the president of Seroptimus here, Debbie Golkey, as well as Barbara Hatch and Nancy Nevett. Are we here? If you'd like to come down?
All of them can come over.
Okay, yes. And what I'd like to do is read this proclamation that we prepared at the Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Zaragoza's office particularly, and this is a really important one. This is proclaiming March 8, 2012, as Seroptimus Stop Human Trafficking and Sexual Slavery Awareness Day, and I thank Seroptimus for bringing this to the attention and doing what you do for this. Whereas March 8 is designated as International Women's Day, as we heard earlier, by the United Nations, to celebrate and recognize the advancements of women's rights and participation in the local and economic arenas, and has been chosen by the Seroptimus Club of Oxnard, Camarillo, and the Caneo Valley as a community awareness day to stop human trafficking. And all the Seroptimus, come on down. Whereas trafficking is the movement of people within national or across international borders for the purposes of commercial human exploitation. Approximately 75% of all human trafficking victims are women. Studies show that about 2 million women and children are held in servitude around the world. 2 million. Each year, between 800,000 and 900,000 people are trafficked across international borders, 80% of whom are women and young girls, with most cases occurring in New York, our state, California, and Florida. And whereas the goal of Seroptimus's Stop Trafficking campaign is to raise awareness to the community about human trafficking, advocate for stronger laws and enforcement, and take action to empower women and end slavery. And whereas Seroptimus nationwide have gathered in transportation centers, airports, and bus depots, which are prime locations for traffickers, held walks to bring attention that trafficking is not just a global problem, held workshops and distributed thousands of brochures depicting the modern-day victim. And whereas Seroptimus International of Oxnard, Camarillo, and the Caneo Valley of the Camino Real region supports the Federation, Seroptimus International of America programs to promote awareness, advocacy, and action, and that all Seroptimus clubs are in the position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that they have the right to live free from violence and exploitation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim, and I'll come down there and present this, Seroptimus Human, Stop Human Trafficking and Sexual Slavery Awareness Month, and with a special recognition to our clubs that are here today and for your commitment in helping to educate the residents of our county. And I'll come on down and present this to you, and please feel free to come up to the mic and let us know a little bit more about your program, and thank you for doing it.
And I'll go with you. Thank you so much, Seroptimus.
You're welcome. We have a few words to say. I'm Debbie Golkey, I'm the chair of the event. I'm not the president of the Oxnard Club. We do have a couple of presidents with us, and I'd like them to introduce themselves, starting with SI of the Caneo.
I'm Nancy Nevett.
And I'm Barbara Hatch, SI, Seroptimus International of Camarillo.
Camarillo. And these are our other members. There are a lot of people that couldn't be here this morning because they're at work. So I'm really happy that we had a lot of other Seroptimus come out and support us. And thank you, John. I just wanted to say a few words about the event. This event started in 2008 after the Senate adopted U.S. Slavery Awareness Day. So our Oxnard Club has been doing this for five years, and this is the first year that Camarillo and Caneo Club joined with us. So we're very excited about the event that's going to take place on Thursday, and we have a flyer there that kind of shows what our event is. We're going to start at 5:30 with a walk down Oxnard Boulevard. It is a community awareness event, so we're trying to raise awareness. So when people are going home from work, they're going to be seeing the Seroptimus, we'll be wearing red, and we'll be carrying signs. And with your permission, I'd like to show you maybe a couple of signs that we can.
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely. We're going to be carrying Stop Sexual Slavery, I'll let somebody else hold that, and Stop Human Trafficking, and we have our other signs on stick, so we didn't want to bring those. So, and then we're going to be ending up at the Heritage Square Town Hall for a panel of excellent speakers, and we really want to encourage the public to come out and hear our speakers. We have Dr. Lois Lee from, who is the founder of the Children of the Night, and she has saved tens of thousands of girls off the street. And just remember that these women and girls are people's sisters, or mothers, or aunts, or nieces, that need to, daughters, yes, that need, you know, our help. And we're their voice, and they can't speak for themselves, and we want to speak, you know, on behalf of the women and girls. So please come, and it starts at 6 o'clock. And some of the other Seroptimus members would like to say a few words, too.
Basically, I would like to say that we, what we have focused on is getting the educators to come to this event, to learn about what they, in their jobs, can do. We fortunately have Big Brother, Big Sister advocates with us, and they've spread the word, and I hope the auditorium will be full of educators learning what they can do to protect children and women.
Seroptimus actually means best for women. It was founded in 1921 in Oakland, California. It is now acknowledged by the U.N. as an international nonprofit organization. Our philosophy is to improve the lives of women and girls locally and around the world.
And I brought some handouts here. These are the brochure of what the modern-day slaves are. So this is a problem that's just not a global problem, but it's in our own community, too. So I brought these, and if you can maybe distribute them to some of the other people here.
And I'll make sure and get this to Supervisor Lon, too. I know she'd be nice.
Oh, great.
Laura is going to be there, touristy.
Oh, right, right.
I can have another meeting in that.
Okay, that's all right. We're going to.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So I can get some good light, no, right behind where Supervisor Parks is, right over there? Yeah, just take a couple of steps back for me, please. Say goodnight for having a good light. Sure. Whatever you like. All right. One, two, three. I'm going to take one more. If you want to pick up that piece of paper, you can.
Thanks, Laura.
Smile. Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very, very much.
All right, glad to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break, and we'll be right back. Lynn?
No.
No, we're going to do the harbor, and then we'll take a two-minute break. All the good things that we.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Well, Supervisor Zaragoza, this is your letter, but I think you were commenting on the fact that you wanted to be sure that we came up before the board with this recognition as Port of the Year. And I'd like to express some gratitude also to the board, because this really goes back to 1998 and has a lot more to do with the people you see back here in this row and Maryland toward the back. When you approved the draft master plan for the harbor, that moved us toward a family-oriented, education-oriented, activity-oriented kind of place. And the staff found this whole tall ship institute, because we didn't have one of our own at the time, and started all of these activities and outreach to the fifth graders for whom this is part of the state curriculum. And really, this recognition by the national organization isn't just for doing the festivals, which we've been doing, it's for the educational piece, for teaching the community about what's involved in ocean life and sailing and safety. And so we were surprised and really pleased to be recognized by them, because we're kind of newcomers to this whole field. So I think it's here somewhere.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Oh, fantastic. Well, thank you so much.
So this is the, yeah. So, and we've got staff people here. These are all the staff people, Marilyn, you, too, who, you might want to stand for a second, who worked on this whole process.
Thank you so much.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay, another two-minute break. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, Honorable Board Members, CEO Powers. Thank you for this opportunity to present this issue on behalf of Supervisor Zaragoza and the Commission for Women. As background information, the Commission for Women was established in 1981. Their mission is to encourage, support, and facilitate the empowerment and education of Ventura County women. The Commission serves in an advisory capacity to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. The Commission does not have a county staff person designated to administer or assist with commission meetings or activities, and the Commission does not have funding for commission meetings or activities, so they do operate through their own volunteer staff. And so today, what we wanted to talk about is a proposed study on the status of women and girls in Ventura County that the Commission has proposed. So in the course of pursuing their mission to encourage, support, and facilitate the empowerment and education of Ventura County women, the Commissioners decided it would be beneficial to the community to conduct a study on the status of women and girls in Ventura County. The Commission also decided to apply for grant, grant funding, to hire a consultant to conduct research and administer the proposed study. And in fact, the Commission was successful in obtaining two grants totaling over $20,000 to complete their proposed study. But the major issue before you today is that the Commission for Women, as an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors, does not have the authority to apply for or accept grant funds. So with that understanding, the Commission Chair, Ms. Lee Riggan, who is here today to make a presentation, was in touch first with Supervisor Parks Office when she was the chair at the end of December, and then with the transition, was in touch with our office, with Supervisor Zaragoza, the Chair of the Board, to ask for help in resolving this issue. And our office owes a great debt of gratitude, not only to Chair Riggan, but also to Linda Catherine Lee from the CEO's office, who has worked with us quite diligently on this project. So thank you very much to Linda Catherine Lee for excellent work on advising Supervisor Zaragoza in our office on the intricacies of how to resolve this issue. We also thank, from the County Council's office, Mr. Andazzo. After meeting, Supervisors Zaragoza.
The Commission serves in an advisory capacity to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. The Commission does not have a county staff person designated to administer or assist with Commission meetings or activities, and the Commission does not have funding for Commission meetings or activities. So, they do operate through their own volunteer staff. And so, today, what we wanted to talk about is a proposed study on the status of women and girls in Ventura County that the Commission has proposed. So, in the course of pursuing their mission to encourage, support, and facilitate the empowerment and education of Ventura County women, the commissioners decided it would be beneficial to the community to conduct a study on the status of women and girls in Ventura County. The Commission also decided to apply for grant, grant funding, to hire a consultant to conduct research and administer the proposed study. And in fact, the Commission was successful in obtaining two grants totaling over $20,000 to complete their proposed study. But the major issue before you today is that the Commission for Women, as an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors, does not have the authority to apply for or accept grant funds. So, with that understanding, the Commission Chair, Ms. Lee Riggan, who is here today to make a presentation, was in touch first with Supervisor Parks' office, when she was the Chair at the end of December, and then with the transition, was in touch with our office, with Supervisor Zaragoza, as the Chair of the Board, to ask for help in resolving this issue. And our office owes a great debt of gratitude, not only to Chair Riggan, but also to Linda Catherine Lee from the CEO's office, who has worked with us quite diligently on this project. So, thank you very much to Linda Catherine Lee for excellent work on advising Supervisors Zaragoza in our office on the intricacies of how to resolve this issue. We also thank, from the County Council's office, Mr. Andazzo. After meeting, Supervisors Zaragoza and all the commissioners agreed it would be beneficial to the community to complete this proposed study, and Supervisors Zaragoza agreed to bring this issue before the board. So, the recommendations today from the supervisor are to approve and authorize a research project on the status of women and girls in Ventura County, to ratify and authorize the Commission to submit two grant applications to the Ventura County Community Foundation, to approve and authorize the Chair of the Board to accept the grant on behalf of the Commission... I'm sorry, on behalf of the county, and to authorize the Ventura County Community Foundation to serve as the fiscal sponsor to administer this grant. And then finally, in the course of discussing all these various issues involving the proposed grant and the study, the commissioners on the Commission for Women felt it would be beneficial to get some clarification on the roles and responsibilities of the Commission. So, they're asking in the future to have a study session with the Board of Supervisors. And at this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Lee Riggan, who's the Chair of the Commission, to present a little further information on this proposed study.
Thank you, Stan. Ms. Riggan?
Thank you, Supervisors and CEO Michael Powers. I've prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. I did not bring copies. I don't know if you have the copies. But if you don't, you get to watch the show. This is our presentation about the Commission for Women and its projects. Okay.
It's the top one.
And I know it is a very difficult job to be the Chair of anything. So, I admire John Zaragoza for being the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Each of you taking that position work very hard. Shante is here with me, and she's going to also speak. Diana Goodrow is a co-Chair of the Committee, as is Shante, and she was unable to be here. This gives you an idea of our history. We were established by you July 1981 with the support of over 16 organizations. And we were funded by you until around 1992. Our mission, to encourage, support, and facilitate the empowerment...
Lee, did you say you were funded until 1992?
Yes, we were funded until 1992. Then, I think there was... There were budget problems, and the state said, "Don't fund the Commission for Women anymore." You can come back and fund us again if you want. We serve in an advisory capacity to you on issues impacting and/or relating to women and families, and to... Oh, thank you. To coordinate efforts with federal, state, and community groups to improve the quality of life for women and families. To accomplish this mission, access to current data regarding women in Ventura County across a range of indicators is required. The purpose of our study, of this study, is to provide data to develop programs to reduce systematic social inequalities and lead to positive social changes. Informing and advising policymakers on the matters of gender equity in Ventura County providing valuable information. Establishing a baseline of measurement for future data. Demonstrating the necessity of collecting statistics on women of all races and ethnicities. Strategically targeted origins of differences between men and women. And removing barriers women face to allow them economic self-sufficiency and social This project report will discern progress between men and women, and between women of color and white women in the four power components. The power to make decisions and policies, the power in occupation selection and flexibility, the power to meet basic needs, the power to stay healthy and safe. To do this, local data will be collected on women's political participation, employment and wages, economic and social autonomy, and on her health and well-being. There will also be demographics of the Ventura County women collected. We see the community needs as the follows... Following. Women in the United States have made so many strides towards equality that many believe gender discrimination and inequality are no longer justifiable concerns. To determine whether or not there is a need for a concern, it is necessary to continue tracking women's progress and current degree of equity. Therefore, the collection of data based on gender continues to be imperative in the identification of systemic problems and inequality, inequalities for women. To fully understand the implication of such information, the data must be disaggregated to discern progress between women of color and white women, as well as between women and men. The disaggregation of statistics would also promote more effective use of county resources. Most of the data available is aggregated, and therefore may be misleading due to white women's exceeding status skewing the statistics. To ensure Ventura County policymakers and advocates are aware of the needs for local women, the Ventura County Commission for Women has initiated this study to report on the status of women in Ventura County. This gives you some idea of our membership. We are composed of 15 members. Right now, we have only one vacancy, who serve at the pleasure of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. Their professional backgrounds are pretty strong in different fields. The Ventura County Women... Ventura County Commission for Women is a county commission, not a nonprofit, and will use a fiscal sponsor of the Community Foundation if you approve it. The Commission is an interactive organization with members acting as ambassadors at women's organization meetings. And we do this in collaboration and partnership with various projects. And we conduct our open meeting each month, except usually we don't meet in December. This is our program goal. Increase gender equity by the Commission leadership through advocacy, research, and community enlightenment. We have three objects, A, B, and C. Object A is to organize and train our four Ventura County Commission for Women teams and our partners. B, there are five phases of object B. Object B, complete the secondary research within the first quarter, update existing data with the... Completed by the Cal State University Channel Islands for the Commission for Women was the 2010 census data, research findings for the four power groups. Phase one, update census data. These are the activities and the findings. And this is... These are to be done within the four power components. Objective of phase one, the outcome, what we hope will come out of this, is disaggregation of statistics. Promoting the efficiency of county resources. These statistical data are to become clearly aggregated, or have been clearly aggregated by gender within race categories. Inform policymakers and others on matters of gender equity in Ventura County. Establish a baseline of measurement for future data, and demonstrate the necessity of collecting statistics on women of all races and ethnicities. And serve as a vehicle for change. That is what we hope to do. Objective B, phase two, is internalizing what we find. Editing the findings in the four components, finding for experts to draft their responses to us, to give us an expert opinion, formulate conclusions, outline our goals, and research best practices, and formulate the recommendations. The outcome of this is to provide documentation on equitable underdualization of intellectual resources. In case you don't know what intellectual resources are, it's women. And recommend strategies for local government, private sector, and community-based organizations to address this discrepancy. Objective B, phase three, the original research is going to be completed in the third quarter. We'll coordinate and conduct four community-focused groups. If we can, we'll slip another one in there, but our goal right now is four. And the outcome is to obtain and organize research data from four focus groups. Objective B, phase four, complete... Editing complete. We'll have appendices, figures, and tables. We'll identify barriers to achieving equality, provide a baseline for future monitoring of the women's progress, and we'll edit the report. This tells you that phase four outcomes are those things that I already mentioned. And the baseline data will be available for comparison in five years, and the report will be ready for distribution. Phase five of objective B is the distribution and presentation complete. There will be the fact sheet, the CD format, and published report on our website, www.vccw.net. Objective C, this is where you come in again. We will give you a presentation, and also the Women's Legacy Fund, the Ventura County Community Foundation, and we will mobilize to enlighten the county community in the fourth quarter. Four teams will be established as speakers advocating for the report's recommendations. Then, in five years, we hope to make comparison to see how we're doing, and if we are still collecting information, or if we've improved the way we are collecting information by women and ethnicity groups. These are some of our supporters. California State University Channel Islands, Professor Downey, and four Capstone Project students put together the first part of the study. The Women's Legacy Fund and the Fairburn Fund funded this grant this before... Today, to consider. And we've had support from the Ventura County Community Foundation. Business and Professional Women at Caneo Valley, Channel Islands, Chapter of Links, California Women's Agenda, the Ventura County Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We don't know about that last one yet. We're going to find out.
Who are your supporters?
Yes. What is needed from the Board of Supervisors? We need you to approve and authorize a research project on the status of women and girls in Ventura County. We need you to ratify, approve, and authorize the Ventura County Commission for Women to submit two grants, grant applications, on behalf of the County of Ventura, to the Ventura County Community Foundation to fund the research project. We need you to approve and authorize the Chair of the Board of Supervisors to accept the grant award on behalf of the county, and sign a grant agreement and any amendments as applicable upon review and approval by the County Executive Office and the County We need you to approve and authorize the Ventura County Community Foundation to serve as the fiscal sponsor to administer the grant. And we need you to direct the County Executive Office to schedule a study session with the Board of Supervisors to discuss the Commission's future, as requested by the Commission. Again, please, direct the County Executive Office to schedule a study session with the Board of Supervisors to discuss the Commission's future, as requested by the Commission. Indicate or develop the policies and procedures under which we may operate. Soon, please. And this is... We want to express our thanks to Supervisor John C. Zaragoza, Stan Hakes, and Linda Catherine Lee. Thank you so much for all that you've done for us, and thank you for bringing us here before you, the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you so much. Any questions of Lee, or staff, Stan Hakes? We have items one, two, three, four, and I think we have some recommendations on item number five. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to...
That's okay. Very briefly, because, thank you, Lee has done a very good job in summing up our presentation. I just wanted to say that when I was appointed in 2007 by Supervisor Foyle, thank you, Supervisor Foyle, I thought it was very disappointing that we hadn't had a comprehensive study of women in Ventura County. And so, since my appointment, it's been a passion of myself, as well as the other commissioners, to get this completed. And I want to thank our partners in Cal State Chatham Island for stepping up, as well as the students especially, and of course, the Ventura County Community Foundation, Women's Legacy Fund, for supporting our efforts. That's what we...
Thank you. Now, I'm going to have Michael share some information on... Changes on number four, or number five.
Thank you, Chair Zaragoza and Chair Riggan. Just a couple of recommended items. One, on number four, just suggest that you add to that and provide a progress report to the board.
Okay.
Add on number four...
A progress report to the board.
Progress report.
From VCCF to the board.
For number four.
Did you want me to do this?
Well, yeah, if it's easy. Yeah, that'd be great. Sure, sure, I can read the whole...
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Just add that we give you a progress report.
Or that the foundation give us a progress report, since they're going to be...
The foundation give you a progress...
Yes. See, 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 okay.
So, we'll read, "Approve and authorize the Ventura County Community Foundation to serve as the fiscal sponsor to administer the grant and provide a progress report to the board."
They're not answering me in the booth. Hello?
Okay.
That's okay. I just read it.
No, it's okay. I'm probably...
A progress report, yes.
I think we got it. Okay, and then...
Number five.
Last, I'll read the recommendation...
This is my recommendation, I've changed it. Go ahead.
I'll read the number five and then read the amendment. So right now, direct the County Executive Office to schedule a study session with the Board of Supervisors to discuss the Commission's future, as requested by the Commission, and recommend adding, and direct the CEO's office to conduct a fiscal and administrative review and report back to the Board at this study session. That's part of the whole thing. And that's it.
I have a question. This is great that you are going to finally do this study that you've been wanting to do, and I'm wondering, how long is that? How long will it take?
Well, I can tell you that we planned on having it completed by September, in time to give a report at the Women's Legacy Fund luncheon. I'm hoping we can.
What I was thinking is, maybe that would be part of the presentation workshop with the Board of Supervisors, you can present that to us also, the results of the study?
My desire is that the study with the Board of Supervisors takes place no later than July, because that's the end of my term. If, if it were to wait for September, then probably someone else will give you the presentation. So whatever your pleasure is.
Okay, it seems like that we'll get the information one way or the other.
Right.
So we'll get it in written form, but it seemed like it would be a good opportunity to get that information back to us at the same time, but we'll get it in written form instead of as a presentation then.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Most of it.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve-
And I'll go ahead and second that.
With, as amended.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Lee, and thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Good work, ladies.
Good job. Yes.
Yes.
And, okay, it's passed. And we're, uh-huh, and we're going to adjourn. No close session. Thank you.
No close session?
No. Thank you. Nope. Thank you very much.[1478.24]